Request to delay, but we will get started. And first item on the agenda is the prayer and pledge. And if you'd please stand with me. Bow your heads. Dear Heavenly Father, thank you for this day. Thank you for everything you've given us. Thank you for allowing us to live in such a wonderful community where we can come together as citizens and live in such a wonderful place. I lift up everybody tonight in the community, those that are sick, have lost, have needs, especially this time of year. We definitely want to pray for all the people that are affected by the wildfires all over. And I just ask you, as we go through this meeting, just please be with us. We got a lot of new people. Give them the strength to do your will. In Jesus' name I pray. Amen.
Amen. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Second item on the agenda is the swearing in of the new officials. So we have Judge Lee Dreyer. And what I would like to do is invite you up to where I'm going to move out of your way. And if you'll please join us up here. Do you want to do one at a time or all together?
It's entirely up to them. It's their night. I'll do whatever they want to do.
Okay, all together, okay.
If you'd each raise your right hand and repeat after me. Aye, state your name.
Aye, Scott Lucas.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will perform with fidelity.
That I will perform with fidelity.
The duties of the office of the City of Fairview, Tennessee Commissioner.
The duties of the office of the City of Fairview Commissioner.
To which I have been duly elected, much shorter sentence there.
To which I have been duly elected.
And which I am about to assume.
Which I am about to assume.
I do solemnly swear to support the Constitution, to the constitutions of Tennessee.
I do solemnly swear to support the constitutions of Tennessee.
The State, the United States of America.
The United States of America.
And the city charter of the City of Fairview, Tennessee.
And the city charter of the City of Fairview, Tennessee.
And to faithfully perform the duties of the office.
And to faithfully perform the duties of the office.
Of the city commissioner.
City Commissioner.
Representing all the citizens of the City of Fairview, Tennessee.
Representing all the citizens of the City of Fairview, Tennessee.
Congratulations. I'll turn those over to the county clerk. Congratulations again.
Third item on the agenda is the election of a vice mayor.
I would make a motion that we put forth Shannon Crutcher as vice mayor.
Okay, we have a motion. Do we get a second? Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Okay, fourth, the next item is the approval agenda. And first of all, I would like to make a comment that we need to put on the agenda the election of the planning commission. The next meeting is Tuesday, so it'd be very important. We typically do it at this time. So do we need to add it to the agenda, or you want me to do it before we take the?
You can, you can have the hearing now, or you can add it to the agenda, subject to the passage of the hearing for exigent circumstance.
Okay. Well, let's go ahead and have the hearing and do it now, and then we'll go on to the agenda. Well enough? Okay. So if you will, I mean, as I stated, there's kind of emergency to it all because we will have a vacancy, yeah?
Yeah, Mayor, that's, that's the exigent circumstance. My opinion is, is that we had a commissioner that served as the elected member of this body, served on that board by the election of this board, and that member is no longer with us. So we have a meeting coming up, I think, Tuesday night. So it's important that we have a member from this board serve on that, that commission.
I think it'll be a week from this Tuesday, second Tuesday night.
Well, either way, before we have another meeting.
Right.
And I agree with you. It's just, it'll be a week from this Tuesday. So I'll make a motion that we find there be, there's exigent circumstances to appoint that position tonight.
Okay, we got a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, we got a first and second. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
You want to add that as 10D on new business?
Okay, so that'll bring us to approval of the agenda.
Move to approve.
Second. Okay, we got a first and second. Any discussions? Okay. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Item number five is citizens' comments. And the first citizens we, our citizen we have tonight is Mr. Ron Rowe. Please come to the podium.
First, I want to congratulate the three new Board of Commissioners, Debbie, Scott, Derek. It's going to open up a new chapter in the City of Fairview for their future. And also, it'll be one more paragraph on your resume of life. So congratulations to all of you. What I want to comment on basically is under, under your new business, item A and B are directed, directing a, to rezone property off of 100 from RS 40 to commercial, general. And I just want to make comments that the land use map as it exists currently does not show that to be commercial. It's residential medium density. And then as you move away from that property, it becomes residential light, low density. There's a reason for that, that when you go from low density to commercial, you need a transition. That's good planning practice to do that. That's in place right now. If this is, if these, this is, they're given the commercial that now disrupts the transition, you're moving commercial property closer to the school system. Also, one of the comments that the staff made at the planning commission meeting was if the PC, the planning commission recommends for approval, an amendment to the proposed land use map, they would, you would need to, you need to do an amendment to the land use map. The question is, is the city going to have to pay for that, or the residents going to have to pay for that? That was not discussed at the planning commission meeting. The planning commission voted five for the rezoning and four against the rezoning. I was against, because the findings of fact here don't add up to, at this current time, to change the zoning. I asked the question of the property owners, do they have, do they have a buyer for the property? And the answer was no. Do they have a plan that they want to administer into this property area? No. So it's, the purpose is just to change it to commercial for better sellability. So I'm just asking at this time that, that you, when this comes across to you on item 12A and 12B, that you would reject that and keep the land use plan as it is, because we can't keep changing that. That's, that's one of the problems. If we keep changing these zonings, then it's going to be hodgepodge. So thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next citizen is John Stark.
First of all, congratulations to all the new commissioners. I hope a year from now, you're going to be real pleased that you did this, or not have a second guess. I want to speak a little bit here on what I've read in the paper about having a master plan. We had a master plan that started back in 1990s. Paid $30,000 for it. And it ended up on a shelf, I guess. Nobody ever followed it. Didn't even know where the copies were. Few years after that, another master plan. Paid $60,000 for that one. I don't know where it is. I don't know whether anybody here at City Hall knows it, but you certainly don't follow it. Now we're talking about getting another group in here to make another master plan. We spent $90,000 on master plans now. And by the, it just happens to be, and I, gentleman who's here, sitting behind me, is Bill Griggs. He was involved on that first master plan, where we had a citizens' committee, and he helped write, he was deeply involved in preparing that plan. So he's going to be very much knowledgeable on what, and what was done. He's now your city engineer. So it seems to me it's a logical thing to have the city engineer, if he can find these plans, and maybe start working on combining them together, rather than go out, hire another new firm, do the same thing over again. Thank you.
Item six, awards and recognition. Do we have any tonight? Okay. Item seven, public announcements. Any announcements?
Mayor, I would like to make sure everybody knows that the Fairview Police Department is sponsoring their shop with a cop. If anyone hasn't decided what they want to do for someone else for Christmas, this is, is an amazing thing to do. You can help some families in this community, and I would ask that everybody consider doing
Thank you. Staff comments. So Ms. Johnson, you got anything for us tonight?
I do, I have a few things, actually. I think the first thing, just a quick reminder that the regularly scheduled meeting for December 15th was canceled, and we are instead having a special meeting on Monday, December 19th. That has been posted on the website, and it will be in the paper as well. Also, that night, we're going to have a workshop at 6:30. That is for the audit presentation. We do hope to have the final audit to include with your packet next week, so that you'll have time to review that. But the auditors will be here to present that and answer any questions you might have that evening. Also, next meeting, we will have all the open board seats for the, the board that need to be filled, which will be one on the tree commission and then industrial development board. I will also go ahead and advertise for the citizen opening on the tree commission left by Ms. Rainey.
Okay, Mr. Darty.
Thank you, Mayor. I have nothing to announce tonight, other than the audit, the 19th.
Okay, great. Okay, Mr. Paisley. I'll change it up. I didn't forget about you.
I just want to announce the Friends of Boone H. Park are having their fireside concert December 10th at 2:00 PM. Music is going to be Best of the West, which is David Best, Michael Lester, and Chris Carver.
Great, thank you. Okay, Mr. Hall.
Thank you, Mayor. Board of Commissioners, and welcome new commissioners. Tonight, all I have is to introduce our new codes inspector, Michael Sullivan. And if he will get up, I'd like to have him up here. And if you'd like to say a word or two, I'm sure they would like to hear you. Anyway, that's all I have tonight, is to introduce my person that's, he's already hit the ground running, so that's, that's a great thing.
Okay, welcome, Michael.
Thank you. I guess all I'd say is congratulations, and thank you all for letting me work for you.
Thank you. Okay, if that's it, Chief.
Several items. First of all, congratulations, commissioners. I look forward to working with you in the future. First, I want to start off with, start shop with a cop. We're doing really well. It picked up in the last few days. I appreciate you getting the word out there. We're at 21 children currently, and we have $2,680 in the fund. It's been brought to my attention that Food Saver will match whatever their employees put in, so we probably still have a lot of money coming in. Registrations end on the 3rd, but we'll continue to take money up until the 17th, which is the day of the event. So we, we expect to get a few more children, and we'll take all the money we can get, so we don't get caught short-handed. Secondly, I received notice this morning that Fairview is ranked within the top 10 of safest cities in Tennessee for our population. This was ranked by Value Penguin. It's a New York-based company that crunches numbers for insurance companies, that they provide input to insurance companies, so they know where it's safe to insure, what, municipalities are safe. And we are currently 14th overall in the whole state for a safer community, so I just thought I'd share that with you.
Thank you. Did we, did you have anything, Chief? Okay, thank you. Okay, that'll, in the staff comments, approval of the consent agenda.
Move to approve.
Second.
Got a first and second. Any discussion? And I'll just, for clarification, for the new board members, typically number nine is only if we've removed anything, and then out of the consent, we have the option. If we did want to move something out of the consent agenda, we would have that opportunity. And so that is why number nine is there. But if no one had requests for anything to be removed, then we'll proceed, you know, I'm voting for the approval of the minutes, which was under, but sometimes there could be several things under consent. Any other discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. All business. It is A, discuss and take action on History Village funding requests. And Mr. Collins, were you going to comment on that?
Mayor, Members of Commission, as you're aware, we've been working for some time to identify the, the final cost estimate for the improvements to be made out at the History Village. I know, I've seen Dr. Rice here. I know there've been some discussions about that. We have a couple of those items we're getting prices for currently. I know Mr. Paisley in the park has done a good job of getting those. I think we're down to two estimates that we need to get before we can get a final number to the permission. As soon as we get that, that, we'll bring that back and have that outlined specifically, and then follow that up with any budget amendment or budget change at all that we need to provide those funds. But other than that, that's where we are, still waiting on two estimates to get you those numbers. We hope to have those back at the next meeting.
Okay.
Mayor, based on that, I move to defer to the December 19th meeting.
Second.
Okay, first and second. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Item B, discuss and take action on bill 2016-29, ordinance number 943, ordinance for amendment to the City of Fairview budget for fiscal year 2016-2017, History Village.
Is that, is that the same thing?
Yep.
That is the same. It's been deferred, so there'll be no action on that. We expect to have that full. We'll likely get that information out of everyone in an email in advance, and then determine what, if any budget amendment needs to be done for that, for that purpose.
So no need to defer that one also, since you did the other one. Okay, new business. A, discuss and take action on bill 2016-33, ordinance number 947, an ordinance to change the zoning of certain properties in the City of Fairview, Tennessee, located on 2480 Fairview Boulevard, owned by Craig Cropper and his wife Janet, as shown on Williamson County Tax Map, 46, parcel 69, from RS 40 residential to CG commercial, general. Yes?
Mayor, if I may, I'm going to recuse myself from new business A and new business B.
Okay, I'll need a motion to move forward.
Yeah, I'd make a motion to approve as read.
Okay, you want to approve? Okay, got a first. Do we have a second? Okay, I'll second the item for any discussion that may be, want to be had.
Mayor, I think that if this property, if it's not a master plan, and it's not the land use plan, I don't think we need to approve that. I think we need to stick with the plan.
Any other discussion?
Mayor, my position, well, first of all, I want to hear from the citizens and the public on this issue. And in order to do that, I believe we have to approve the first reading, so that we can set a public hearing on the matter, so that we can get them here to hear what the citizens have to say on this issue. And for that reason, that reason alone, at this time, I would vote to approve the first reading, just so we can move the process forward, so we can move on to a public hearing. Because it's my understanding you have to approve it before you can approve the public hearing on it.
Would you like to speak on that, Larry?
Well, you have to have a public hearing before you can, can have the second reading. And if it passes tonight, it would move, and assuming if this passes, I assume you would pass setting a date for a public hearing. At that time, you would have the public hearing, and then you, you, anybody from the public has anything that they want to say, and then you would have a vote, and it has to, any rezoning ordinance has to pass two readings. One reading won't enact it. It has to pass two readings. And Commissioner's correct in that you could have the public hearing at that time, but generally, you schedule those for convenience sake, with, before the, the second reading at the meeting after your, your first reading. Of course, if it's, if it's turned down tonight, then you won't need to act on B, because you won't have a public hearing for something that didn't pass the first reading.
Okay, any other thoughts or discussion? I have one rule of thumb. I think a lot of times, we, we do take a lot of votes thinking, okay, well, we have one more reading, we can do the public hearing, but that's true. But you hate to make somebody go through the process of keep coming back if there's not enough support. So, you know, wasn't sure if anybody else had any thoughts. I actually liked your suggestion about being able to allow the citizens to comment, but as we move forward, the land use map is really important, and changing it is a big decision. So being new, if, you know, we're not ready for that, then, you know, we may want to just go on through the process and let a public hearing occur. Yes? Did you have something, Mr. Collins?
May I offer on, if that's, if that's the measure that would be done, is I'm understanding it, the, the discussion will be to have a public hearing if there's favor to this. As a matter of procedure, the easier way to do this would have someone offer a first reading for tonight, which would not require a motion or a second. It would just simply be offering of a first reading. That wouldn't, that wouldn't effectively enact the process. So you'd be able to have a first reading offered on A and a first reading offered on B. At the next meeting, you would open a public hearing, close the public hearing, and then have it offer a motion and a second, as far as a vote procedurally. If there was a vote to turn it down, then you could move to deny. If there's a motion to approve, then that would be first reading to move the process forward.
And that's typically what we've done. Yes.
May I say one other thing for the benefit of the new commissioners? They may already know this, but of course, B is a resolution that requires one reading. But the land use map is a plan. How this board votes on, on this is not my concern. I'm just saying this for information. The land use map is a plan. It's not an ironclad plan. It is not like a statute or an ordinance that you have to follow. People generally do follow it pretty closely unless they have some good reason for not doing that. Otherwise, why have a land use map? The land use map is strictly the purr, purview of the planning commission. It's one of the few things that they have the final say on. Obviously, if this board, the legislative board, by statute, has the final say on rezonings, and if the board should pass that, then that is a mandate to the planning commission to change that, because you would be ipso facto changing the planning, sorry, changing the land use map. I'm just putting that out there for, for your information, and they may already know it, but it, it would be good to hear.
And then I'd just recommend, if y'all have some more questions, we can ask. But we do have a motion on the table, so if there's no more discussion.
Well, let me say, listening to Mr. Rowe and citizens' comment, I've heard half, half the story, I think, as far as one side of what the planning commission wanted. I would like to hear from the property owners. I would like to hear, hopefully, from the people that surround that area, who it may affect if it is changed. And I want to know why we want to change this. As a commission, why do I want to vote to change the land use map? And I think we need to hear that, because it may be, be for a very good reason, it may not be. But until we hear it, we don't know. So just based upon that, I would ask that we offer this for a first reading.
Okay. Just for the record, the landowners are present tonight. We can, you know, they'll have to come to each, every, and every reading. So if it would be better suit to move along tonight, we'll just go ahead with the first reading, if that's how the board wants to go, and then give everybody opportunity at the same time. So any other discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Okay, and that will be item B, discuss and take action on resolution number 16-16, a resolution to set a public hearing for the purpose of attaining a public comment on changing the re, the zoning of certain property in the City of Fairview, Tennessee, located on 2480 Fairview Boulevard, owned by Craig Cropper and his wife Janet Cropper, as shown on Williamson County Tax Map, 46, parcel 69, from RS 40 residential to CG commercial, as shown on Williamson County Tax Map 46, Parcel 69, from RS40 Residential to CG Commercial General.
Madam Mayor, I would move that we vote to approve the public hearing and set it for the next meeting.
Okay.
Second.
Got a first and second? Any discussion?
The meeting that will be, the first meeting in January, to comply with the statutory notice requirements. It won't be the December meeting.
Okay, great. So, the first meeting in January?
I think it's January 5th.
Okay. Any other discussion? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next item is Item C, discuss and take action on developing goals and timelines for the city manager, Commissioner Rainey.
Well, thank you, Mayor. I'm trying to make our job easier, since I'm new. So, I really think that if we have goals and timelines for our city manager, it's gonna be easier for us to evaluate his job performance. If we don't know what we want him to do, and we don't know when we want him to do it, it's gonna be very hard for us to say, you've done a great job, or you've done a bad job. And plus, I think it's easier for us also to plan that course for the city. I mean, what do we want the city to look like in 20 years? So, I think if we have those goals for him, it'll be easier. So, I would recommend that he come in January with a rough draft, and then we'll work on it as a group to add to, or take away, or fine tune those goals.
Okay. Any other discussion?
I'm not opposed to the motion. I think part of determining what the goals for the city manager are is determining what are the goals we want for the city. And I would like citizen input on that. And I think we need to consider going forward, committee as made up of the citizens, as well as the city leaders, to determine what course we wanna take the city in. And I think we have to know that, so we can prioritize what we wanna do, and then we can set a goal for the city manager, and I agree, and determine if he's done his job correctly or not. But I think we gotta do the other part first. And I would just ask that we defer this to the first meeting in January and discuss it at that point.
There isn't a second, but it really doesn't have to, because I wasn't sure if it was a motion. Basically, you can suggest, hey, we want, we can give him directive from, hey, we would like you to, you know, bring a rough draft, you know, as a board without. But if y'all want it to be official, and a lot of this, I'm just trying to talk through until we all get comfortable with how it's, you know, we're gonna all work. But we can just request him to come up with some goals and bring it to another meeting without making it, taking a vote on it. I do like your suggestion, of course, citizens, that does all go together. So, if we want to schedule a workshop, or if y'all really want another agenda item, that's something if you would like to weigh in.
Well, do we get information from our commissions and boards? I mean, the Planning Commission, we have a park board, we have the tree commission. So, don't we, we get information from those commissions? How would we solicit more information from the citizens by January?
Well, I'll just go ahead and...
Go ahead, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mayor. I think the idea behind this is good, and I think certainly, long-term, we do need to have some sort of goals, and certainly, Mr. Collins needs to be a part of that discussion, because nobody has a better pulse on what goes on in the day-to-day operations of the city than Mr. Collins does. But at the same time, I think he just completed his fourth full month, and certainly, we need to fast-track this to some extent, to get some things in place. During that first full four months, he has been over his head with stuff to do. So, to even think between now and January that he could sit down and probably come up with a list of things that he would like to accomplish, I don't, it may be unrealistic, and I know that sounds crazy, but there is so much that has gone on in four months that the man has not been able to stop. So, yes, certainly, we need to evaluate, but I think we probably need to pump the brakes on it and maybe look at doing this after the first of the year sometime, February, March, when some of these other things have kind of calmed down. We've got litigation, we've got hiring issues, we've, he's had a lot on his plate. So, I'm not opposed to doing it. I think it's a great idea, and we do need to have some sort of, something to be able to do an evaluation with at some point in the future. But I'm with Commissioner Burks. I think putting this off till the first of the year wouldn't be a bad idea. I don't think there's a motion. But even to ask him at this point to come in with a list of things, I mean, I can tell you, there's a ton of things we can talk about. The land use map, we can talk about the Water Authority of Dixon County, we can talk about litigation, we can talk about the hiring of a police chief, on and on and on. He has plenty to do, and those are the goals that I'm interested in us finding resolutions to now. And then we can go from there. But until we fix those immediate needs, nothing else matters at this point, in my opinion.
Well, I kinda find it hard to believe he didn't have goals when he got here. And probably, the goal should have been fix the immediate needs. And then we can evaluate how he's progressed doing that. So, I think that if we keep saying, let's postpone it till March, I mean, I think that we need to set it up, that we need to do that, that we need to set up some goals.
I kinda agree. I hear both sides. I think one of the things we need to consider is, how about let's do, push it back to give y'all 30 days to get your feet wet? Because you'll have a little more idea of what you want for some of his goals to be. Give him some more time under his belt, just because it's been a situational, each day is determined for him. And so, a lot of times, the man works. And he's, from what I can tell, is a goal setter. So, I think this'll fit right into where he's gonna wanna go. But my suggestion is, let's give it till the February meeting at least, before we even think about coming back to it. So, and then we can discuss it, maybe that we wanna do a workshop, you know? Just sit around, we're gonna have to, and so, we'll get into, you know, we're gonna have to plan as a board together and just kind of put a priority, you know? Because I have, our top priorities are gonna be his top priorities, too. So, I think we're all gonna have to have that time to sit together, kinda go through, catch up on the, where we are, where you think we are, and where we all think we need to be going. So, I think it's a great idea. Let's, you know, shoot for, you know, I don't know, the second meeting in February? Is that fair enough?
I'm fine with that. And one thing we need to consider is, we're gonna have two different sets of goals. We're gonna have one set of goals that are more just administrative, making some changes, that aren't really gonna cost money necessarily to the city, which are probably things that can be done easier or quicker. Then we're gonna have a set of goals where we're looking at dealing with the sewage problem, police radios, these types of things that are gonna cost a significant amount of money. So, we're gonna have two different tracks, I think, that we're gonna have to look at. And I agree. I don't have an issue with the rough draft. I think that needs to happen sooner rather than later. But we do have some fires we're putting out around the city, so to speak. And it all needs to start happening, but we do need just a little bit of time. And I think February is perfect.
Okay. Any other thoughts? Okay, so we'll move on. And that'll put us to New Business D, and that's electing a Planning Commissioner member to represent us as a board.
Mayor, I move to appoint Derek Burks to the Planning Commission.
Okay. Got a motion? Got a second?
Second.
Okay, got a second. Any discussion?
Yes. Can we ask the city attorney what the rules are about Planning Commission members, about the appointment according to M Task? And what rules are we following?
The state statute provides that two members of that commission will be either the mayor or the person the mayor appoints to sit in their place. The other, there will be a commission member that will represent the Board of Commissioners on the Planning Commission that is appointed by the Board of Commissioners. His term will be, will run until his term on the commission expires, or until the Board of Commissioners, they certainly, he would serve at the Board's place, or they obviously could remove him. The other members are appointed by the Board of Commissioners in accordance with the state statute. And they serve terms that are laid out in the city ordinance. They're normally four-year terms, but they're staggered so that they don't all go on the board or come off at the same time.
Did I misunderstand that the ruling is that the mayor appoints all the Planning Commission members, not the board?
No, ma'am. You, that is not correct. The, if you read that statute, Section A says that. There's a Section C that has a census number in there that was from the 1970 census, and that was Fairview and Williamson County in 1970. And that says that the remaining commissioners, except for the one appointed by the Board of Commissioners to represent the Board of Commissioners, and the one appointed by the mayor, if the mayor don't sit on there, is appointed by the board. Now, why that was done, I do not know, but it was based on the 1970 census. It only, that little, I have found no other city that that applies to, the population applies to. But I don't know when the city started this, but I know that it was, that's the way it was being done in, when I came here, in 2004, I think. I was asked one time to check that. I did that. I checked it all the way to the Census Bureau in Washington, and those population figures do fit the City of Fairview and Williamson County in 1970. So, that is an exception, that's Section C1, that is an exception to Section A of the code.
So, in your legal opinion, then, we are doing it the correct and proper way?
Yes, ma'am. Because I spent a good amount of time doing that, and it hasn't been repealed. The statute's exactly the way it was in 2004, or what it was. I guess it's the way it was in 1970. I haven't gone back that far. But I did check the archives, the state legislature, and I don't know who the representative was that appointed, it was a representative in this area. But in part of the discussion, there was a statement made that this is the Fairview provision. But if you look at the statute, I mean, if you look at the census at that time, that fits, and I don't know if it fits anybody else or not, the statute is not so narrow that if there was another city and county that that fit, it would. There is also a provision in that same section that's based on the 2000 census, which is different. I don't recall what they were, but I don't know what city that applies to. I'm sure it only applied to one also.
With that being said, so what M Task sent forward saying state law, that our own ordinance can't supersede state law, is not the fact?
It is the fact. Your ordinance does not supersede state law. What he didn't do was read Provision C1. He only read Provision A. And people typically do that. I find a lot of people see the thing, and they see these little statutory provisions that have population ticks on them, and they say, well, that couldn't possibly be me. If you looked at Williamson County, the way the population is today, and the way Fairview's population is, you wouldn't think that could have happened in 1970. But that's been, what, 40 years ago?
Yeah.
And it still applies now. If the city wanted to get that changed, if you constituted your planning commission pursuant to Section A of that statute, it would not be a deal that constituted, planning commission would be subject to attack. Now, whether somebody ever attacked it or not, I don't know. But it would not be formed in accordance, and you'd have to argue that, well, we substantially complied. Everybody else in the state does it that way. But those are not good arguments to have to make. When it clearly, C1, if you look at the tables in Title 13 of the Tennessee Code Annotated in the 1970 census, it hits a nerve.
Okay. So, if you'll just follow up with, was it Jeff?
Broton.
Yeah. If you'll just double-check with that, just because it added some confusion when we had to, you know, when one of the new commissioners inquired, it looked like we were, all of a sudden, we've done it wrong for a long time. So, we just really need to make sure that we have proper clarification, and there's not a state law that's superseding ordinance that we put in. And if so, which I trust your judgment, I'm not saying this, this is not a reflection, but if you would have that conversation, because now we do have his professional opinion, and I know they're just a guiding force for government.
I think he's probably right on one provision in there. I think, although you'd be making the same argument that you substantially complied, I think we will have to repeal the ordinance about the alternate planning commissioners, because I think you would face the same thing, saying you're sitting for somebody else. It's a great training ground. I have the utmost respect for the gentlemen that are in that position. But it would, it could open you up to a, not, you constituted at the time that was done. I think we need to repeal that. But the part about C1 as to how you appoint the commissioners on there, I have no problem with that. And he, I think he made some statement that I correctly pointed that out.
Okay. Well, what we'll do, that doesn't change how we do tonight. This is a majority vote for the commissioner seat.
That's correct.
So, unless you just have more discussion, I do think we probably are gonna have to come back and have this conversation. But just to make sure that we're totally clear, I would like to move on. So, we had a first and a second, and a nomination for Commissioner Burks. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, and that'll bring us to the city managers' items of discussion.
Mayor, Members of the commission, I have three things for you tonight. First, on an update that we've been working on for some time for an item, the matter of Christmas wreaths to be hung. We have been back and forth with Middle Tennessee Electric on this, also with the state, and the clarifications we have gotten are effectively this. The Middle Tennessee Electric has given us the approval to install Christmas wreaths on the utility poles, effectively in the same manner as we have the current banners. If you've seen the Christmas, the Fairview Christmas banners that we've had there, they've had a couple or a few restrictions to that. First off, they don't want them to be any higher than those banners, any nearer to any electrical lines. They are not gonna give us authority to light any wreath, so they will not be powered. And they don't want them to, and we have to install them in such a way as to assure that they will not fall for effectively any reason, which brings some issues with that. We wanna move forward as best we can and look for some options to do that as a follow-up discussion. And we'll get this out in an email and make some discussions to err on the side of caution. I know the effort has been to have those wreaths installed. We want to move forward that effort first. As a secondary option, we are looking at the purchase of some commercially-made wreaths that may not be as cumbersome or put us in any potential litigation issues regarding the use of the wreaths as far as the safety of installation, ensuring that they're gonna be where they are, any proximity to any electricity or other things. So, as quickly as we can get that information back out, and we'll do that in an email form to everyone, we'll move forward. But we wanna let you know that we did get some approvals, it's just approvals with restrictions. And we wanna make sure we can accommodate all those restrictions before we move forward and do it safely and do it timely. So, that's where we are, and as soon as we can get that information back, we can. I know we're working as recently as today on getting some prices for some wreaths that we could use as an alternate. As soon as we can get that, we'll get that out to everyone and see if we can move forward to get those installed. Wreath-wise, that's the update for the wreaths. Secondly, there is... Secondly, there is a work session immediately following this, this meeting, we have a reception set up, so as soon as we get to this and this meeting in general, we'll move forward the work session with, with the members of the commission, we expect that to take a little bit of time. And thirdly, as it relates to item 12C that was just discussed, with, with the timeline and, and the work to be done, let me, let me say, I'm fully on board with setting goals, all the things that we need to do, and for those of you who've worked with me for a little bit of time, I think you know that's kind of how I operate. There's a lot of work to do, and that work really can't be underestimated. I will also tell you that when I interviewed for this position seated in this room, one of the questions I was asked was, would I be interested in working for a contract, with or without a contract? And my answer was that I was not interested in seeking a contract with the city, and as we sit here tonight, that's still where the, we are for a couple of reasons. Primarily, again, we have a lot of work to do. There's a lot of information to get to the board, there's a lot of information to get to the community, and there are a lot of goals to do, to set, and a lot of things to accomplish. Having said that, I'm not one of those people who are concerned with meeting goals for the sake of meeting goals personally. I believe that the best thing I can do is provide you as much information as we can, set those goals and move forward, but I can assure you that I'm not going to make a decision for the simple purpose of accomplishing a goal, so I think I can maintain my employment. My, my goal within those goals is to make sure that the city moves forward each and every day. So, as we get forward that, you need to know that that's my commitment as we, as we move forward. My commitment is not to attempt to set some goals that I can meet, or in some way, attempt to ensure my employment. I think that's done by improving the community each and every day, and as we move forward, those goals will establish themselves and be met. So, I just want to let you know, I'm certainly not opposed to that, but, but my goal is to improve the community first and worry about employment secondary, and that's where we are in that, so just kind of as a follow-up to there.
Thank you.
And thank you.
City Attorney, Mr. Contral.
Thank you, Mayor. I just have a couple of things. I'd like to congratulate Vice Mayor Cracher on being elected to the Vice Mayor's post, congratulate the new commissioners who were elected to their post, and say to each of you that I look forward to working with you in the future for the betterment of the city, as I did with your predecessors. Thank you, that's all I have.
Thank you. And now it's time for Commissioner's comments, and Commissioner Burks?
First of all, I want to apologize. I think Mr. Darty gave me a cold when I met with him yesterday, and it's hit me like a ton of bricks, so I keep coughing, so I apologize for that. But I've managed to keep my voice for most of the day. I'm, I'm very honored that the city of Fairview voted for me to represent them, and I just want everyone to know, I will always do my best to put the city first and do everything I can. That's all I have, thank you.
Commissioner Cracher?
Thank you, Mayor.
Or Vice Mayor Cracher?
Hi, right, new title.
I gotta practice that.
I want to congratulate the, the new commissioners on their election to the board. I look forward to working with each of you guys. We have a, like Mr. Collins said, we have a tremendous amount of work to do, some of which has just sort of been stifled over the years, and we haven't been able to accomplish a lot, and I feel, I feel that we will be able to make some positive strides toward making the city of Fairview a much better place than it was when we were elected. So, and that's, that's certainly my goal. When I got elected, it was to leave the city in a better spot than before I got here, and I know that I share that goal with you guys as well. So, congratulations, and I look forward to working with you.
Thank you. And Commissioner Rainey?
Well, I am also honored to have been elected as one of the commissioners in Fairview, and I look forward to working for all the citizens and being your voice, and being available to listen to any concerns and relay those to this board. Thank you.
And Commissioner Locas?
I also want to say thank you to the citizens of Fairview, very humbled by your vote, look forward to serving, and also want to publicly thank everyone here at, at City Hall, all the employees here who have done a good job of kind of welcoming us and getting us up to speed as new commissioners. City Manager Brandy Johnson done a great job in, in making sure we have all the tools that we need to kind of hit the ground running, and so I'm looking forward to serving.
Thank you. And I also want to congratulate y'all, excited to have y'all here, look forward to a bright future. I know it's going to take some adjusting time, but my hope is it doesn't take us long, that we can get focused and start moving everything forward quickly. As the Vice Mayor said, I think we all have the same vision, and that's a better Fairview, and if we invest now and we make good, sound decisions, our children will thank us. And so, that always is a focus for me, and I hope it is for y'all. I do want to give, I was at a, a training, or it was a meeting, for organizational meeting, and Lamar Alexander spoke at it, and he was a great speaker, and so we sat there, and it was right after the election, the day after the election, and he spoke about, you know, because I guess a lot of people are asking his opinions and stuff, and he said, "You know, it's just time to come together, and if we focus on the good things, everything's going to be okay. We can't focus on the bad, we got to come together as a community, we're one team, we're one community." And so, anything we do good as a board is going to be appreciated by the people we serve. Anything we do bad, we'll be told about it, but that's okay, it's, it's part of it. But if we're making our decisions based on good, sound judgment, I agree, listen to the citizens, that's one of the best things you can do. You could get more information, some of the biggest votes I ever took, I always surveyed different groups of people, just to have their opinion, because when I went in, I wanted to know, if I was making a decision, I wanted those faces of the people in my mind when I voted for it. So, listen to the people. But also, there's another factor of you need to learn and research on everything you can, there's so much out there. And use that to come up with your own decision, because there's going to be times, just like our kids, when your kids growing up, they look and they see something, a big shiny toy on the shelf, and it sure would look good in their house, in their room. Make sure that when you, you know, you make those decisions, we're not doing it for now, because eventually, your children are going to grow older, that toy is going to end up in your garage, and it sits there, and you spend a lot of money on that. And did we better the community? So, make those decisions. Is my vote going to make the community better? Am I going to work for the entire community and not a small group of people? And if you do that, y'all are going to be successful, and I wish you all the success in the world. And I'm here to support you in anything you need, I'll be glad to be there. It is rough for the first, you come in thinking you know, and you have big plans, and, you know, you, there's a lot of learning you'll do in the first year, regardless of how prepared you are. But wish you all the success in the world, and be, you know, happy that we're going to be on a team together. So, if, with that, if I can get a motion to adjourn, we will.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Okay. The meeting's adjourned, thank you.